We've got that here.
Okay.
Including the motions.
I was just gonna ask if we had it written out.
We do.
Okay.
Is there any, is the public hearing, anyone from the public want to address council?
Antis here.
Everybody lives here except for two. They almost live here. Okay. If there is no other comment, any concerns, questions? We will close the public hearing. And we will move to our city council work session. And then we'll come back to the budget during our regular council meeting. Discussion of test well. I don't know if you've had a chance to really look at it. It's really pretty big.
Well, until I had a picture. I was, I was, I was reading through this and I was trying to draw it. And then I realized on page three we had a drawing.
But they did give us, it does, but the only thing that it does is tell us that the static level of water, that's about the only thing that we would probably understand as opposed to clay, gravel. We know what's there, but we don't know how, our expertise doesn't let us understand, you know, what that really translates to. We know basically in gravel, it's a good, better option for having the water. And so.
Well, looking at it, it's pretty clear why the static water level is at about 300 foot, because you've got clay above it a whole bunch.
Yep. Clay above and clay below.
Yeah, once you hit about 700 some odd feet or so.
The key is, you know, this, you know, looking, referring to the picture of all the gravel and all the layers, you know, you have good filtration, good chance of the water to continue down to the aquifer to be regenerated. Fairly often, I mean, clay does create a bit of a barrier, but with all that gravel and cobble and everything in there, you know.
Yeah, you've got some very, very shallow areas of the clay as opposed to, you can see the cobble and the gravel is, is mostly what's there.
Yeah, for the most part, yeah. Very small levels of clay, which has a lot of water flow through the aquifer.
One of the issues that was brought out before is if you do have that clay, any heavy materials, oils, that sort of a thing, the clay would have a tendency to keep that from filtering down in so much so.
So the question that I, I have, probably this is more for when we have Craig or somebody come and we go through this a little more in depth. I'd like to see something like this, but representative of what, the way things are powered well for comparison, just so we have an idea.
That's not bad.
Because if we're gonna make a decision based on, I think it would help us to, because by no means my ideology expert.
We're still, as far as we know, it's still basically they're thinking 700 to 800 gallons per minute is projected pumping well. And what were you saying that the state, McKay, you were saying that the state sets the amount that you could pump from any aquifer, any level or something?
Yeah, usually they allow roughly two thirds of what the.
Yeah.
Capacity is. So if it can produce 1,000 gallons a minute, you'll be closer than 700.
Yeah, we're.
Just to, just to ensure that the aquifer is comfortable to pump down.
That's, that's the same issue we have with clouded well, same issue we have with the, the Lofer well.
No more than be there, the state dictates it, allows you to pump a certain percentage.
And do we know anything about the Lofer well, like you were saying last time? Do we have that information already?
Yeah, that's.
The depth, I mean for.
Well, like, it, would it be?
Would it, would it be comparable?
It would be comparable.
That's what we're asking, you're asking, would it be?
Well, is that gonna be a better, would that be a smarter investment to make that bigger and come more?
No.
Something developing, a little more.
No, the Lofer Canyon or the clouded well?
No, the one that we found, was that Lofer Canyon?
No, that one, the one that is, that's, no. There are three wells that are technically still active, but the one is, is still in the process of reactivating it. And that's the one we call the dugway well.
Oh, the dugway.
The problem, they, at least the geology is they drilled that well from what we've been told by Craig, doesn't give us as much option. It doesn't look like the produ, we don't know how much deeper we'd have to go to finally produce anything close to what we've got in the other two wells.
Oh, okay.
The other, some of the other options we've talked about is still going back up Lofer Canyon or back up here on the, can't think what the term is, the, I guess doesn't matter. And trying to, to get some work, another well possibly drilled up there. This still was, was the recommended choice. Now, one of the concerns, one of the problems we've got with the test well is it says right now, they're guessing X number of, but when we actually drill a production well, we went with an eight inch. And when we do a production, it'll be at least 16. And 16, that doesn't necessarily mean too much, except that it will go down. And if they do hit bedrock like they've done here, that may be where they have to stop as well. And, and it won't be exactly right on that side. It could be just a little ways away, within 50 to 100 feet, somewhere in that vicinity is what they normally do. And we could strike gold, we could strike mud. You know, we don't know how much shifting is going to change that variable. So. And they, they can, but to do that, they have to pull out all the old casings, not that they couldn't do that. I mean, it's kind of a proven spot, but typically within that 100 feet, you're gonna have a very similar amount. It could go up, it could go down, it could remain about the same thing.
Now, I think we brought it up before, but I, when Craig was here, at one point, when we were discussing our, you know, the water, the whole, the whole program, he said, he said that actually, he thought that the, the Lofer Canyon well, he felt like they just didn't go deep enough. You know, they broke, the bit broke off there. If that one, if that one could produce like 1,000 gallons a minute, boy, it would sure be a lot, a lot better pumping down to, down to the tanks than all of that back pressure pumping up to the tanks.
Yeah.
And there actually is that, you know, there's that power line that runs straight across there, I don't know, I don't think it would be real complicated to put three phases up there, would it?
It, it wouldn't be complicated, it would just be really expensive. I, I will tell you today, I, I checked to see what the status was on that, that power line that I had mentioned previously. And a lot of that's dependent upon a individual who's getting ready to develop down in the canyon, whether or not they develop in Woodland Hills or they develop in Elk Ridge and, and so on. But I, basically I told him, I said, if there's any movement there at all, let me know. Because that, that does, then you're only running it from, effectively from the association gate up to where our well is as opposed to miles of wire and paying full cost and waiting to be reimbursed when that's developed down the road.
How deep is that well up in Lofer Canyon? Do we know?
I, what runs my mind is 700.
I was thinking six to 700.
Roughly six to 700, but it's kind of interesting, I haven't been able to find the full amount of information towards that.
We could, we could actually, we could probably go to the state because we have to file all the paperwork and we probably should have something someplace, but it's a matter of locating that here.
I'm sure we do, I just haven't seen.
I've always been under the impression six to 700 feet.
And that's about six in my mind is somewhere there, but.
And we have an eight inch way there.
Yeah. So, and from my understanding with that well also is that when it was being drilled, they went down and hit the lubial vein, basically cracking the, in surface layer, and then that's what caused the drill bit to break. So basically an underwater river running through there past that pump. And so there's not like typically where you'll have a bit of a cavern, I guess you'd say in the aquifer, it's a little bit of a different, different situation, so I'm not sure.
Well, it's certainly something we need to, before we make any decisions, final decisions, we need to, to review and say, okay, why is that position two as, and this is position one, position three, what are the negatives and the positives? We'll be talking with Craig here shortly to get some more information, to get a little more of a feel for this one. One of the things I think that has to happen though is that we can't sit back and, and not do something. Something has to happen. Interestingly enough, speaking with a former mayor of Genoa, they have one well. That's it. But in 1931, they made an agreement with Saniquin that they would tie into their system and that they would pump on a regular basis into, into Genoa, 100 gallons per minute. And when they, they had a well that went down and they were out six weeks. And I'd have to do it, just kind of stand up. Anyway.
Oh, it's a.
We've been in the dark for a long time. And when that happened, then Genoa, I mean, Saniquin pumped additional, but they were still very, very tight in, in their situation to try and get through for six weeks. Now, I don't know what the timing in the year was, we couldn't have picked a much worse time, except this past week perhaps, as far as the water is concerned. The fact that we have been working on this for some time, we have got to continue until we have a solid plan. And that is a third well, and without question, we have to have one more redundancy in a well setting. We need to consider either upgrading and upsizing one of our tanks or putting in another tank. We still need to talk and have discussions with Payson and see what kind of options could possibly exist with tying in with their well. I think we just have to look at, at all the options that are out there, weigh them out, but I don't think we want to wait very much longer. We, we need to move on this. Make, make some smart decisions. I think we've been making smart decisions. The timing of this, this well failure had nothing to do with anything we were trying to do. It was, it just, if anything, it kind of slapped the horse on the button, we've got to get going now, a little bit more.
One thought to entertain with this as well, when we were talking about options, you know, obviously the option of having another pump and another motor, directly, I mean, purchase those ahead of time to cut the turnaround time down. You know, basically, from what I gathered from the Whittisons, if we got lucky on this pump, we should've been out five to 10 weeks. Could've been, you know, been out.
Yes.
We got lucky that somebody in California had this sitting on the shelf. I suppose we'd be, we'd be purchased, it's a both pump and motor, and have the stage ready to go, I guess this happens again. I feel Whittisons probably accommodate, could get us down, go back to the hole in three or four days, what they did on this one, had we, you know, we had everything ready.
Yeah.
We're looking at roughly, you know, you're looking at about 17,000 for the pump and roughly 30,000 for the new motor.
How much for the pump?
17,000.
So we're looking at roughly $50,000.
So, and then of course you'll have your 10 inch casing as well as your 3 inch.
Yes.
And your connecting rod and everything, that's roughly another 20,000. You know, but obviously when we purchase that and have it on site, that's, from what I understand, is pretty well readily available, stocked with.
Have you talked with Whittisons about the rebuild on that pump?
I have, talked to them today. Unfortunately, it's irreparable.
Okay.
When the barriers went out, the turbines inside start up the lids to where there, it would be more costly to purchase a whole new pump.
Now, if we can't get one that's equal to a new, we don't, we don't want to.
Yeah.
And another motor, if we do this other well, it's always been the concept that we, we duplicate basically what's in clouded. So that whichever pump goes out, if it goes out, or we go down just to repair, we want to rebuild in 10 years to, to save it. We've got that spare motor that will fit either well, pump will fit either well.
That, that's smart, man. That's something we could do quite.
That's gotta just fit into a budget though.
That would be the nice way to do it, now if we were full of 1,000 gallons a minute, 700, 900 gallons a minute out of the Skyhawk well, the 350 horsepower motor would be probably too big to interchange, you know, to go back and forth. We'll probably end up going with, with something a little smaller, I would, but then I, I don't know for sure, you know.
That's a question we need to ask.
It would be a question we need to ask, make sure, with a 350 horsepower motor, same as the clouded well, we may, we may run into issues, we may not be able to slow it down enough to where we don't strip the, strip the well.
Okay.
Well, then you'd just design like the Lofer Canyon.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
Which is a little.
Yeah.
And have you talked to anybody about a submersible?
Um.
On the, on the new well?
No, I haven't, I haven't ran it. I don't know if you get the, if you'll be able to.
It doesn't sound, yeah, I don't think it, I don't think it'll work.
I don't think it will either.
From what I've understood, but.
I think it'll.
See, that's what we've got in Lofer.
Yeah.
But we're not pulling out that much water by comparison.
Well, no, yeah, we don't have the head pressure like we do.
And even though the well is 6, 700 feet deep, what's the depth on our pump?
Uh, roughly 3.
That's what I thought it was, 3, 350.
340 or something in there, yeah.
So we're not lifting.
I can give you the exact on that, but.
Okay, okay. We'll, we'll keep this, it'll be on every agenda for the next little while until we have a, a decision made and we'll, we'll get it fit here somehow. Review of city celebration. Trish.
Hey.
You need to clap for those three right there, that's who did it.
They were.
That's who came to rescue me.
They were good support, weren't they?
Um, they did most of it.
Well, they, the thing that is important to know is that you can count on our staff.
Yeah.
And not only just for physical help, but because they understand the workings and such, so, very good.
I, two things, just an atta girl for Trish, that was, Dynamite, you were great, you had all of the, that dance off and then MC and then getting everything done. You were super there. And, and the thing that, the thing that I noticed, and maybe it's just, just my mindset, but to me, it seemed like there was a lot more involvement. I think that McKay is, is, should have an atta boy also along with the city staff, but that's, that's a nice thing about having the public works director living in the city and he was here, you know, through the whole, through the whole day, where usually before, you know, they might come and set up a little in the morning, but they're gone. But all of the city staff were, were amazing there, you know, through the whole.
Well, you also collected a lot of other volunteers that helped you.
We did, but I, but they carried the brunt of it.
Yeah.
Which, I think that's something that we need to work on.
Oh, I do too.
Because that wasn't, I just felt bad, it was, if it weren't for them, I mean, there's no way, like.
Yeah. So what I, what I would recommend that we do is that we take a breath for a couple of weeks or a month, and then we come back and we revisit and we get the perspective of, of the staff, we get your perspective, we, we pull together, maybe even see what the public thinks, I'll throw a, something in our newsletter and say.
Well, I was gonna say Nelson posted on Facebook, like what, if you didn't know why, you know, and what did you think, are there improvements or what did you really like about it?
Those kinds of things, if we can start collecting this and start looking ahead again, to the end, towards the end of the year to start making our new arrangements.
And I'm getting fired from it, right?
I can't, I can't, what did you say?
You can't resign.
Fired.
There is no way to resign even.
No, well.
You are the woman, you are the woman.
You know, the, the thing that.
There were some people that can't walk and were parking vehicles and walking.
Yeah.
Which, well, it said handicap access, if anyone needed to, they could have.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I put on a rope, I should've made it, I'll make it bigger.
Yeah. That, you know, it's just those little things, just little things that make the difference. Dale?
One other comment is that what I observed in previous years, everybody has been there from that, that nine o'clock to maybe, maybe 12 o'clock, but it was winding down by 12 or 1. There were, there were still a ton of kids playing, playing all the games and stuff at 3 o'clock when I gave them down to help tear down. And Nelson also did a great job, he dunk master there.
Did very well.
But that, that reflects that there was, there were a lot of people enjoying, you know, all of those, all of those games.
I think your food trucks were a good hit, the mayor's dinner went over very well. For the most part, we've got to find out what we can do to get the fireman's breakfast back up a little bit, a lot a bit.
I'm thinking, and I took races today, but I'm thinking maybe next year we have fireman breakfast and then maybe have the firemen also do the carnival. Like Tori and I can set up all the games for you, we'll put them together. If you can help us find volunteers to run it, like you sent out the sign up genius or the fire, you know what I mean? Then all the proceeds, you will make those as well. Does that make sense? So everything would be ticketed and it would all go to you guys?
I'm, that may very, I'll, I'll run that past.
Yeah, I was gonna have you talk to them and find out, because we want to incorporate a lot more water games next year. We want to have like 10 water games, we want you guys to come out with the hose and spray the kids.
Oh, we'd love to do that.
Have it be more fire, you know what I mean? And then have all the proceeds from you and then that will help with what you didn't get from the breakfast, you know what I mean?
Right, right, yeah.
I mean, every once in a while, you've seen the firemen's race, they dress up a civilian in fire clothes and they have races back and forth.
Well, I mean, we could, we could have a truck and maybe let the kids for one ticket tour the truck or try on a fireman outfit or whatever, we could do more.
Or we could have a hose contest, the two hoses to see who that could knock the other person over, never mind Dale going.
Excellent.
That's true, something like that, like have.
That's our water park. Two other things that were really positive there, I thought, one is that we had bought all of our own setup tarts that will be excellent for next year, plus that sound system, having our own sound system. And, and that worked well, I thought. It projected well.
It did.
And that makes a huge difference, controlling that, not having to hope that somebody will come set up something. All of that helped to make that go smooth.
Okay, we'll get back to that and we'll have a. Yeah, Marcy was trying to figure that out too, so. There's, yeah, we've always had a lot of participation in the past, lots more this time, but. We'll have to.
Maybe this is the time.
But I also think we had, the sixth ward was a girls camp and they're big supporters of that, and the fourth ward had youth conference.
Oh, they.
So two of our wards that usually are really big, you know.
Yeah.
Well, the girls, but not, yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
I know, you're right.
Well, the demographics are somewhat shifting. You, you have the older part of town where the kids are now more grown up and they're in high school and so forth.
Where Jim lives.
Where I live.
Um, there's a lot of kids from.
But that's what I wanted to ask, what, what can you do to get more of the older demographic there too? What, like I want you to be thinking, what else can we, what can you?
One year, we, a couple of, two, three years ago, we did a, a military theme and we had a veterans float and a middle, that sort of a thing, so. There's a lot of things, that's where we just need to, we need two or three hours.
Yeah.
Not two or three hours, we need an hour to sit down and brainstorm, then another hour to brainstorm what we, you know, and just bring it all together. So, anyway, good discussion, last comment, we'll go.
This may be an appropriate point, a place to, to bring this up, you and I discussed it just briefly, but would like to see the pavilion constructed and the parking lot down below in the next year and a half. And, and we need to, you know, I was discussing with Royce today, we need to, to get that, get that in specifically designated, or, or maybe it's okay to have it just in that broad development phase of capital, capital facilities. But that may be something, if we had a pavilion and the parking down there, we may look at shifting the celebration to that end of town next year and see how that would work.
I think it's an option that we need to look at.
Yeah, unless we stick with the fire thing and we need access to, but maybe some, maybe one or two events are down there.
I think you could do both.
Because you had said that before, you said maybe we should do the movie down there, whatever, so I'm thinking maybe we can.
Yeah. Yeah.
But when they open up that housing just right here, that would probably, if we're right by it, because I'll tell you what, we had a big turnout from down where I live, a huge turnout.
Good.
So they came up, but it was probably because of little kids too much, maybe, I don't know.
Well, yes and no. The kids had a great time, the little kids had a great time and it's, it's a city celebration, we just need to focus on making it again, citywide in every aspect that we can. Next. Truth and taxation hearing discussion. We don't have much time to put together the final ideas for that truth and taxation hearing. We, we know that Tyce was going to try and prepare some things for us for the next city council meeting. I think what I'd like to do is try and limit the other things that we have on that city council meeting in the first, on the 12th of July and allow for extra time to again consider budget considerations for that truth and taxation hearing. Have a presentation that Ty can at least give us somewhat of a feel for, we can add in the questions that we have, the comments that we have. Right now, we've, it, it's gonna be a real tough sell because of what we have to do with water. It's gonna be really tough and so we're gonna have to take a close look at, at everything that's on that want list, wish list, have to have list and be, be real careful and, but we still need to have, we still need to have that discussion, the public still needs to understand, here's what's going on and how, we can't get to here with our current funding. At least not, not within the foreseeable future, it's gonna take some time. I had someone come to me, there was a representative that came to me to, on that property for I'd like to do the economic development and, and I got the word that they wanted to meet with me, so I set up an appointment and the, the word was, tell the mayor, when he sees this, he's gonna like it. I didn't. Not even close. Not even close. So, there is, there's no consideration whatsoever in that proposal for any economic development.
Oh, there was?
No, nothing. And I wasn't too, I was very, I was very blunt and I said, now I don't know where the council will go with it because I don't have the vote, they do, so we'll just have to see. Right now, they didn't even know it had needed to be annexed, they'd done a lot of other research to kind of. research to kind of back me into a corner, so to speak, but they didn't even know that. So we'll see what happens. Any other specific that you want to mention about that discussion for truth and taxation?
I know in our last council meeting, we talked about scheduling another meeting between this next council meeting and when we actually have the truth and taxation hearing to kind of go through things.
And that's why I wanted to make this next city council meeting an extended visit of that.
So is that planned to just consolidate it?
Pretty much, I think so. I, I, we've got so many other things going on, I think that will be our best bet.
Okay.
We'll try and, or, I don't know, can we get Curtis to be at that meeting by chance on the? It's hard to know, it's the 12th of July, so we're going to try and limit whatever else is gonna be on the agenda and we'll try and focus mostly on that. Okay, city scholarship discussion, we, it's been kind of tabled for a while. There's, there's no, any, any other thoughts on it? Well, do we want to do something or not?
Brittany was gonna follow up with.
With Nevo and it was basically said, well, you do what you want to do. There, there was nothing from Nevo School District, it was a, it was not at all what it was portrayed to be. So, I was hoping that we would, that that would just be a nice channel, that we could funnel some ideas through, but it isn't looking real good. So, without the other two councils here, let's just move ahead. It is now six thirty, six fifteen, we've got.
Six forty.
Six forty, stupid clock. We're twenty minutes early for, for city council meeting.
How do you vote?
Any, any discussion from, any points that you want to bring up, Royce?
Do you want to talk about the islands?
Yes, would you do that and?
Do you want to go vote?
Well, if, if we get going here, I might make it anyway. Yes, thanks Royce, I forgot, this is late, last minute.
Royce voted twice, you got two stickers.
Paul didn't vote, so I. I, I didn't realize you were a Democrat, Royce.
Okay, do you want to explain it? You've had a chance to discuss where this is going to, coming from, et cetera?
This is an option to landscape the islands that go down by the roundabout. And what the proposal is, this is by Dean's landscaper. He's willing to help out and as an option, it's only an option, to landscape it at this cost and through the phase of the development, he has to pay for installments. So this would be line payment. We want to, instead of us budgeting for the, the landscape of those islands, that we just, he would get a landscape and this could be.
One of the, one of those four payments, what, what are those four payments for? Is that for the park space that he's not putting in or, I mean, what is?
Yes, they're like twenty-six thousand dollars a day. Now, now with this, one of the concepts is even in the discussion was to pull out the trees because we can possibly do that next year with the tree grant and then just kind of define where the trees need to go. We see the trees are a big expenditure to this.
I'd rather see the trees than the rock, but.
Wait, is he, is he only willing to do it if we use his landscaper or?
Well, it's beca- because he, he has his arrangement with his landscaper, he'll go ahead and pay his, his landscaper.
No, yeah, I, I get that, I'm wondering like.
Could we get another bid for someone else?
Yeah, we've got two other quotes and they came back, like, I'm just asking, I'm saying he's being dishonest, I'm just saying like, what if we bust with the bids and they come back ten thousand less? Is this negotiable, is, or we don't know.
Again, I'm just, I'm just, all I'm doing is knowing this out of the.
No, no, I know, I know, I'm just, I'm asking that, like, cause I like the idea of being paid for it and doing that, I think that's.
It's not been driven by staff or any, it's just one of those concepts that came up.
Sure.
Okay. Through that, it's just a way to get it done for budgeting and how that we can.
Yeah, and I, I have.
Two seventy-five for the trees, I, you know, I don't think there's some of these numbers as far as like.
Are for Dean.
They're pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
And Dale, who's done some research, maybe he can give us some guidance on that.
I just wondered if that was the condition that Dean is, I guess we'd have to ask him.
I would have to ask Dean, but my, my guess is he's, this is the landscaper he uses all the time.
Yeah.
And he's, he's a very good landscaper, I've seen some of the things that he's done, had a good discussion with him. That doesn't mean there aren't other good ones out there, but. Dale, Dean, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I actually, it is, it would be nuts to have somebody that's going to do it, I think, would be a lot, would be the best, best of both worlds there. I, you know, we did have, I'd, I'd like to see us in that, in those, you've got a pretty long stretches of those little thin, that little thin section, that originally was just gonna be stamped concrete in there instead of grasses and stuff, and it seems like that would be a lot less maintenance, you know, those little one foot wide strips even for, to, to keep grasses alive in there, the drip system.
Is this the bit where the thing goes like this or?
It would be the, there's gonna be some areas where it's only about this wide and what they would put in that area, I don't know. I mean, you could.
They've got a lot of grasses, he's got grasses and I have figured, you know, seventy-five, but.
And I'm sure this can be tweaked a little bit.
Okay, that's what I wonder, is this?
One gallon of grass.
But didn't we talk about not wanting?
And then also like plan B to this would be concerned with pulling the tree out, using it for the grants, that he goes ahead and does this.
I don't know that.
And we use that, kind of swamp the trees where, you know, he has to do that side of the road and so he goes ahead and finishes, they're done, and then when we do the grant, we do the trees down.
It is good having one person doing everything.
And he'll just kind of turn it off.
That way we're not digging up to get the block in there, we're not digging it up to get a tree in there and we, and the bricks, we mess that up and just they're done, and then when we do the grant, we just go down this, we give him the trees for that side.
And.
Be good to double check that, some of those, some of those, I don't know if that ninety-four hundred, I was just, I was just doing the three major areas there on weed block, actually I don't have that with me, but I have, had priced out the weed blocks, a twelve foot wide weed block, like the tree stakes, fifty-four, at twenty, is that twenty-five dollars each?
Yeah.
See that, they were two fifty each when we, for the tree stakes that we have down here.
That's what I was saying, like, does this seem high to you, but listen, I don't even know what I'm talking about.
I, mine was, I, I was just roughing it out with just, just the trees, the trees were around, this is not a bad price for the trees, I got seventy-nine sixty-five, I was around that, that's six, seven thousand. I, the rock to get, you could get either the three and four inch rock or you could get that five, six, the bigger rock from Nephi Sandgravel. And, and that was, that, that rock, that green rock, and he may have different, different colored rock than that, that would just call a rock, but it was around seven thousand. But that was just doing the big, the big areas, the weed yard, it'd be worth, you'll measure it out and just see now.
But then that's just for the rock, that's, now we've got to go back to our guys to install.
Yeah.
And the timeframe.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, so these are all installed.
This is totally, totally done.
I.
And right now, our guys are not gonna have time to do anything this summer, even into the late fall, maybe. That would be as soon as.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing it, actually Dean doesn't have to do this until February 10th.
What I think would really be valuable for us to do is, is bring Dean and his landscaper into a meeting and make that decision at that point, then we can ask some more questions.
See what he's doing.
You now have a little bit of an estimate to start with on your own, you could do a little more research, but at least here's a way to begin, so.
I was just trying to think outside the box, we don't have it in the next year's budget, take those.
I think, I, I like it.
So who's gonna landscape the roundabout?
This is the.
No, this is, this is, this is the roundabout.
No, this is just the island, that's not.
Wasn't he doing the roundabout too?
No, no.
Dean, uh, yeah, Dean.
He, he's gonna be doing that, okay, I just, I wondered at what point in time.
He could go to have some input on.
We don't have to pay for the roundabout landscaping at all?
We shouldn't, that's why I asked.
That's phenomenal.
We have.
One quick thought about that, I had a scout come to me and wanted to know, could we, could he for an Eagle Project put a flag in the middle of it? He likes the Woodland Hills look and I just thought, I don't know what your feeling as a council would be, I don't know what, I mean, there's electricity in there for lighting, wouldn't there be if we chose to do that?
Yeah, and I have around an extra formule in there just in case you.
So. I think it'd be fun to have the American flag, the Utah flag and get a nice new flag, new design for Elk Ridge, have our own city flag, be kind of fun?
Yeah.
Anyway, just something to consider, okay? We will now close our work session.
We've got ten minutes.
And we've got ten minutes. I'll offer. And then we have the flag. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this blessing and opportunity to meet together to serve our city and residents therein. We are so grateful to thee for the support and assistance and kindness that was shown upon this city in the repair of our well and the tremendous amount of moisture that we have received as, as well. I'm grateful for the goodness of the residents here and their willingness to be supportive and assist in making those difficult times less difficult. We pray for thy blessing to be with us tonight, that we might be able to conduct the proper business in the proper manner and be a benefit and blessing to our city in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we're close upon our time, we'll just move ahead. Public forum, do we have anyone who would like to address the council in a public forum setting?
Um, I wanted to, did you check that blind corner out yet?
The one on screen. Yes, and as near as we can tell, both of them are virtually identical and they are within the limits. They're close.
What do you mean they're fine, there, there's nothing wrong?
No.
I literally can't.
Oh, I know, but they are, they are set back within the, the limits.
Oh my gosh, I'm just worried there's gonna be an accident.
I'm a little anxious about that too, much.
It might be me, but it's cause I'm.
Yeah, I've checked both of them, so.
Okay.
At, at least I could not find, and, and if someone else wants to double check and, and check that out, but from my measurement, they're within the.
They're within the.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm in, go ahead.
I don't think he's made it here from work yet, but I had a resident that contacted me today and he wanted to find out, and I, I thought, you know, the best way to find out would be to ask, but, um, he has a, a home where the yard isn't in yet and he wants to know when he will be safe to go ahead and order sod so he can actually water it enough to keep it alive. I mean, are we to a point now where we have people that need their yards in, that they can start doing that, do we have, do we have an answer there?
Well, my recommendation is just too hot.
Right, but I mean.
But as far as the watering is concerned, every other day except the weekends, they're gonna miss two days in a row. If, if they're doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they'll miss Saturday and Sunday because Saturday, Sunday is a no water day. And if they go Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, they're just gonna miss Sunday and they will then miss Monday, so, so they're gonna miss every other day except for two days. So, I don't know, do we make an exception of some kind?
He was wondering because he's apparently read that the threshold where he won't be compliant for getting his yard in in time.
And, and as far as that is concerned, if the, if whether, if the weather is not conducive to do it in the winter, there's also circumstances where it would not be conducive to do it in the summer. I, I can't see that the city would, would be in the right position at all to try and enforce that issue. If you've got hundred degree weather and you're trying to keep something alive, I think we wait until the weather. I, I would say that that, we've got to keep that in consideration. And that's the way I will, that's administering it, that's the way I will enforce it.
Is it gonna stay that way where we always have water restricted days? I'm just asking.
I think, I think I would like to keep it that way, we've had that discussion, one of the reasons, main reasons why, it still gives everybody an awful lot of watering time, that's three days a week as opposed to two.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Which is probably sufficient most of the time. And then the other issue that is positive about doing it this way, it breaks it up so that we're not draining any one tank at any given time. It spreads it out throughout the entire city and, and that's, that really is, we think is gonna be a.
I mean, most cities, I mean, a lot of cities do that, that's not, and I like it, but I do see where Nelson's saying like, so what if someone wants to put a new yard in, then do we say, okay, that's the exception, you know what I mean, cause you're only doing that once, right?
Because even if the weather's tempered, let's say it's.
You still want it.
You're still gonna want to water it every day.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly.
Do some stuff every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and you know, I, I think it's, it'd be good to have some clarity that way.
I think so.
And it may be also some flexibility, I know Royce and I, we kind of talked about this a little bit, but, you know, the, every other day with the way that it's currently set up, like today's my day so I could start watering effectively at six and I can water till tomorrow morning at.
Six.
Six or whatever it is, but.
Ten, ten.
But I'm not gonna water during the day, you know, I'm gonna try and water during the night, but it's a lot easier for me and probably for a lot of other people to water in the morning on the day that I get to water and, like today's Tuesday, so water on Tuesday morning and then again on Tuesday night, not Tuesday night and Wednesday morning.
Yeah.
Just from a programming standpoint and trying to get that right, um, cause I'm still trying to figure it out, my, my system turned on this morning, even though I had a program for what I thought was tomorrow, what apparently is today.
Let's see, if it was programmed odd or even.
Well, odd or even, it just pick one of the days and you'll get, so if you have an AM, it'll be in the morning and PM, it'll be in that, otherwise you have to do.
What does it do about Sunday?
Unless you go on a select specific days, it'll just do every other day.
Almost every.
Every other day.
Huh? You want to stand up, you haven't turned them on last time.
That's cause the sensor's behind me.
There we go, there we go.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, if someone is putting in new grass, whether it's hydroseed or turf, they're still not gonna be watering from six to ten.
No.
If they would cut back and they would water the three hours and then the next day they do three more hours, the next day three hours, I mean, how do you get that message across and how do you enforce it and how do you keep the neighbors from complaining, well, he's watering and it's not his day?
That's, that's why I think that rather than being a mandatory restriction, just be, this is our basic procedure, because when you make it mandatory, then it becomes neighbor against neighbor.
Well, none of it's been mandatory, right? It's all just been the mayor asking.
It has been this last, this, the last event is. It is, it's, it's an.
And that was just my observation, so.
Jim?
Last summer I watered a few times a week, that works well. Probably about in about fifteen minutes, I've got this efficient test, I gotta run an hour, get a half inch of water, so around fifteen minutes, I mean, eight inches, just to say.
Do you run it twice?
Do you run it twice? Once a day.
Do you run it?
That's the, the ideal is you water once, go through your system once for the fifteen to twenty minutes and then water that same thing again.
Absorb water with the dry sponge.
It will begin to absorb better.
It absorbs better in the center.
Things were slow, cold heads, so, but, they're designing it to have that. Better pop up. We'll put out about half inch of water in twenty minutes and we'll hold on to pop ups. So if you have all those pop ups, fifteen minutes is gonna keep your grass also in this.
Well, but you know your system, so do what, right? You know your system, if you're using half the amount of water, go twice as long.
What he's saying is, the way that it's written down, the way that it's communicated to residents, you have fifteen minutes.
Yeah, period.
That was a recommendation.
So, yeah, we just.
So say, um, so mine, mine are high efficiency, but also the year grass, they're about the same, it takes about an hour.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike Kay?
Well, I didn't have any one to look into this water restriction in the future, well, near future, kinda what I've seen is that we're using more water than we were before, even with the restriction. My concern is, is we have people running from six to six because they know they're gonna skip that day.
Yeah.
And from what I've seen comparing last year's grass and the things of this year's, we're actually using more water as it sits right now.
When the bills go out, here in another week or so, there'll be a sharp curving in the water usage, I, I really do, I think so.
Concern of the efficiency.
What would you recommend we do at this point?
Well, on that side, I'm almost, maybe even say it, but I'm almost wondering if we go back to letting everybody water daily, it may be easier to make any tank levels. I'm not sure if it's just the fact that everybody's trying to catch up or if this is gonna be a normal thing, that they water all periods of time. But as it sits right now, every night, I mean, we, we have all pumps running and we steadily lose ground in all of our tanks.
So, do we recover well during the day?
We, we recover during the day, nothing, I mean, the cloud worker, the lower hand of well keeps on a few times through the day, but we maintain the tank levels throughout the day, it's just at night, there's, there's plenty of strain on the.
I think there's a, there's gonna be, no question, there's gotta be a lot of people who are trying to make up for lost water. And trying to save what was going south on.
Yeah.
I think over time that would change, but maybe we just open it up and say.
Water conservatively, and that's what I don't know, maybe we're trying to give it a week on this restriction to see if things kinda level out.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what I'm hoping to do is another couple of weeks and see if things level out a little bit.
Yeah, with July coming on and the heat coming on, we'll know if it's, if they're just catching up or.
Or just slowing down, yeah. So, but I just, I did wanna bring it up, you know, for the, you may wanna look at.
Yeah. Dale?
Yeah, that might, that would be interesting to do it, uh, even if you did it and put the message out that, uh, uh, on an experimental basis, we are going to, you return to your normal watering for two weeks or for one month. And, uh, if that works, and then you'll see if it balances out, people aren't worried about, I gotta get it in today because I'm missing tomorrow, or I'm gonna be, if you miss it today, then it's gonna be.
Jim?
I think Nelson had a good point, money talks, maybe make that announcement after the water bills go out, like say.
The reading meters, as we did today.
Right.
So we'll, we'll know within a short period of time. I would say let's give it a couple of weeks and let Mike Kay monitor what's going on and then just as the staff will make the decision as to what we need to do.
Give it a couple of weeks and see if things level out a little bit here, but.
Yeah, okay. Next, amended budget for 2015, 2016, motion.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the amended budget for the 2015, 2016 fiscal year, and in order to comply with state law, the council authorizes the finance director to transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund thirty, uh, an amount so that the general fund unrestricted fund balance is less than or equal to a set percentage, can't be more than twenty-five percent, but should be more than twenty percent of the general fund revenues. Budget for each fund is amended to reflect this authorization.
Is there a second?
No. What exactly, Ovi?
To amend the budget.
No, this is, this is the budget to end the fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Or to end it.
To end it, that has nothing to do with next year.
Okay. I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes, thank you. Okay, number two, Harrison Heights, Phase Five, Acceptance into Durability, uh, you can see that there. There are two, we're gonna do both five and seven, if you wanna, are there any questions?
The, the only question that I had, because for whatever reason, sometimes when people build new homes and, and they move in, things aren't exactly the way that they think that they should be, you know, there's reference here to damage to the sidewalk and curb and gutter during construction and that that would have to be fixed prior to them getting their certificate of occupancy. Who is going to make sure that that happens?
That's, that, that's on the building inspector, they don't get that without the building inspector.
The, the reason I ask that, because this is basically becomes a, a matter of public record, and if that's missed, and it's in here like this, they could come back and I would think that they could challenge the city to say, well, you didn't make this happen, so now you're responsible to do it.
Yeah, and there's a possibility that we're gonna miss something, but probability is, is pretty low because without him completing an entire inspection, they don't get to see it all.
Yeah, I, I just wondered, because this is the first time in all my years where I've seen a reference to the sidewalk and curb and gutter.
Yeah, me too.
Which I thought was really, really interesting.
Kind of the thought line is, if we go through and have, have the sidewalk and curb and gutter, that kind of stuff replaced now, every time you do this, you're gonna have a, a different color of either concrete that comes in or patching that comes in, everything's always a different color. So, you, you go in and you tear out a section of sidewalk and it comes, it comes in as a darker gray, then just up the road, you come in and you tear out another section of sidewalk, comes in another darker or lighter shade of gray, and it just looks like it's all patched together. Thought process behind this would be, before durability, before any durability, I go through, inspect, inspect all the concrete working in and have it replaced all at the same time in the end durability, make sure, it just gives, it gives a cleaner, crisper look. Um, as well, you know, a piece of sidewalk, a piece of urban maybe ran over with a, a piece of equipment, it'd be torn out in the construction process, a same section can be torn out again as they're building the home, or broken again as they're building the home. So cost effectively, it, it is a little, a little better for both the city as well as the contractor and developer on this. I think we'll get cleaner looking sidewalks, cleaner curb, we won't have all the different colored patches going on, different colored sidewalks, um, as well as, you know, it's still waiting, we, we don't release as long until we, until we have this stuff finalized and replaced. So, we do, we do retain that until everything's checked off the list. So, a lot of cities are moving towards this, um, you know, we haven't done it in the past. Would I suggest we try this with anybody, I, I wouldn't, but I think with contractors that we've worked with for years, I think it would be a good chance to try it and see how it works and see if we want any of this as a normal permanent thing that we do or if it's just a trial. Becomes problematic and harder to deal with, then we, we don't have to do our man's faces.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? We need a motion to accept Harrison Heights, Phase Five, Acceptance into Durability.
Some moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion also for Harrison Heights, Phase Seven, Acceptance into Durability, on the same basis.
Some moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Back to the other one, we, I just wanna make a short clarification, you're gonna give the financial director the range from twenty to twenty-five percent, or do you wanna set a percentage in the motion?
Well, it says on here from twenty to twenty-five percent.
Yeah, you can.
Allow that range as part of the motion?
This needs to be between there and nothing, we haven't been asked the line percentage that we wanted him to do, but if we wanted to leave it updated, discretion.
I'm sure he's gonna cut it, he's gonna cut it as close to the twenty percent probably as possible, we don't have an extra five percent on budget.
So we can leave it.
So I think we're probably okay.
We can leave it as a range, thanks. Okay. Next. Uh, we are down to administrative and planning commission. I know there was something I was gonna say, but I can't remember what it was.
We had, I think on our last agenda, the, we were gonna appoint Bruce Thorpe, but we didn't.
We have done that.
That has been done?
Yes, that one has been done. I guess the only thing in just, uh, this past month has been an interesting month, to say the least, there has been tremendous support community-wide. There's still some, some who are not happy and frustrated and still want the appointment to express their frustrations, and we'll accommodate that. But for the most part, this has been an amazing opportunity to bring a lot of the residents together, it is also an eye-opener for the council. Brittany, I think, really did a very, very positive job with what she has done, it is, it's been, been good, I think, every time I turn around, somebody is, is complimenting how well we, we were able to put some things together, and we're grateful for that, and McKay certainly needs, boy, he needs to be recognized. I don't know how many nights he was up multiple times going to the wellhouse to make sure that was still functioning properly. He's followed up carefully, we now have a, a magnetic thermometer on that, on that motor housing, it's within the specified ranges, uh, they went in and they cleaned filters in the AC units, they cleaned filters in the, um, panels, the electrical panels, and everything is running much, much better than it was, than, than those first two or three days. I just wanna commend McKay for his absolute dedication, and I'm, I'm really grateful for the most part that most of the calls that were derogatory at least slowed down. And lots of cookies and donuts and thank you cards were, were brought. We have a great city, we have a great bunch of residents, and again, trying to pull together. I, I'm pleased with that. Dale?
Just add, add to that, how, how impressed, I've, I've been, uh, just seeing McKay, not just in his water situation, but in, in the whole operation of the city, you know, he is a hands-on, involved, uh, public works director, I think, is the best that we've had since I've been there. Uh, and I think you have done an admirable job as the mayor and impersonating, I think this is one of the best city councils that we've had for quite a while.
I can't think of anything else right off. I was just looking for that petition to remove it. I wanted to be one of the first signers. Uh, McKay, do you wanna give us any?
Um, for the most part, we covered everything I brought, um, we did some delivery on our prac cell machine today, so that's exciting, um, but in the shop down there, we also received our, uh, two stool sets for Delinham's park as well as our can cover empty tables, so next probably week or so, we'll be constructing those, leaving those in, and sell them, so set it on that, keep it in some of there, so.
Okay.
I'd just like to hear from the staff, you know, what kinda feedback, uh, that, uh, on the roundabout, you know, I think, I think people were happy to be able to take the roundabout after they spent a few weeks doing the rough road through there, uh, it makes it a lot cleaner, smoother approach there, but you're getting a real, uh, is it a real mix or?
What kind of comments have you had?
Just negative.
Well, at first I think everyone was commenting on how small it was, and I was surprised at the amount of professionals that came out and were speaking their opinions, and so I just remembered that it's been engineered, it's been approved, it's been reviewed by professionals, and then I think Blake Johnson, once it was open and they started to try it, they realized, hey, this isn't so bad.
Pretty easy.
And I'm quite impressed with it, and I think a lot of people are.
I'm just concerned about Paul Crowe driving a bus around it, I'm nervous.
He does it on purpose, he likes that.
Thanks McKay, appreciate your input. Royce, you have anything that you wanna share, Melanie? Council, anything else you'd like to go over?
I, I have one item, and this was, last week, somebody posted a picture of a car that we driven on the trail and it's parked over by the park.
Yeah.
And last night, my wife took me down to the Spanish Fork River Trail, I'd never been there.
Yeah, you've never been there?
No, I, I go there, I don't jog, I don't, I don't do any physical activities, so. Anyways, so, where, where you access the, the trail to keep cars from going, they have like these metal, yes, they have those, but they, they're designed in a way that they can unlock them and take them out, so if they need to drive on them, I don't even know if that would help down there because we've got, they'll just go around it, maybe, but I'm wondering.
I don't think so, I think that would be kind of a notice that.
If, if we had that, maybe rocks on either side so you couldn't squeeze through it?
I mean, there's the big sign, no motorized vehicles, and they just must.
You know, I, I, when, when I saw that, I thought, public shaming, here we come, but.
Hey, that was just to you guys, to Delene, what's on those trails.
Yeah, I saw it on Facebook.
I've driven on the trails in my own vehicle a few times.
No.
And that's just to inspect and, yeah.
I mean, I would have if it was you, but.
I, I like that idea, what, and that's, uh, what do you have?
We bought, we bought quotes on those, uh, just a year ago, and I'm not sure whatever happened, you know, if, but we can, we can revisit that and look and see how much they are.
Only need a whole.
I think they're, they'd be, they'd be good. They definitely.
They're gonna be a couple hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah, I, if I remember right, renewable ones were shockingly quite a bit, they were, they were more expensive.
Maybe more than just sinking a pipe and filling.
Yeah, like your, your regular, you know, pylons.
Like we've got out here, protective, colored out here.
Yeah, yeah, you know, those are pretty expensive, but I know those ones were, the renewable were a lot more expensive, in fact, if you use some time this winter, we may be able to construct, build a few, you know, the, that would work, that, you know, the same thing, we just may be able to give them a little bit of time, you know, weld this up some, the dirty little just the same and house is a fraction of the.
Or dump a big rock, we could just put big rocks there?
Well.
Or would that damage it?
We use those trails quite a bit.
Oh, you do?
You know.
Yeah.
You're driving on those trails?
We do. We do.
I will probably shame you next.
I know. Make sure to shame us, but sure is a lot easier to pack all the tools in a car with a big park.
And the other option is buying them a razor.
Drop out from the razor, that's just me.
It's also just random that you can give it a ride.
Yeah.
We have three sets of minutes, let's start with the first one. Approval of minutes from March thirty-first. I mean, I know that's a long time ago, but there's been a lot happening in between now and then.
Yeah, I've got a couple corrections on the first one. Yeah, it's on the third page. And it has to do with the percentages that the new growth pays for versus the existing residents.
On page three, you say?
Yeah, down at the very bottom. I think it should be forty percent redundancy and sixty percent to new growth, because otherwise the figures don't match. Percentages are exactly opposite the way that that reads.
Was that the way it was proposed, though?
Well, that was, yeah, that's what I was saying. I mean, the numbers, they just needs to match. Even if I'm wrong, I'd rather the numbers match the percentages. That was, that was the only correction.
I see what you're saying, yeah. That it, it shows eight hundred thousand would, uh, be existing and one point two million, uh, cover the. New well, a cost two million, existing residents, and cover eight hundred, in fact, he should cover one point two. So the sixty percent is more than one point two million rather than the eight hundred. So you just.
It's easiest just to switch to sixty and forty percent and then we're good.
Okay, any other additions or corrections on March thirty-first, can we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for March thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, as amended.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. April twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen. Any additions, corrections, modifications? If not, a motion, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for April twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the final one, special city council budget work meeting, May seventeenth, twenty sixteen. Additions, corrections?
Yeah, I've got a correction on page four. States here, take the wages from the sewer fund, it should, should read, should read storm drain.
What line are you on?
Uh, mine doesn't have.
Where?
Mine doesn't have numbers, so.
Two-thirds of the way to the bottom?
Right here.
Okay, it's a line five. Two-thirds of the way to the bottom.
Okay, and then the very last line on the very last.
What is it, you wanted to make a change there?
Well, it says sewer fund and it should say storm drain fund.
Okay.
And then it should say, it shouldn't say sewer fund for working on the sewer, it should say storm drain fund for working on the storm drains. And then on the very last page, um, says, my biggest concern is whether the savings is going for what it was intended. I'd like to clarify, my biggest concern is whether the property tax money is going to go for what it was intended. It's not savings, it's property tax, yeah.
And then, can you fix my name on, done?
I'm sorry, okay, right?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I'm okay, I'm sure she talks, it's a little there, but.
Okay, any other corrections, additions? If not, a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for the May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, as amended.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else? The lights just went out?